Good evening. We're going to have to call tonight's meeting to order. This is November the 18th, 6:32. We'll begin tonight's meeting with an invocation by Dr. Buzz McNutt of the First Baptist Church of Boynton Beach. Good evening, sir. And I'll be followed by a pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Vice Mayor Cosello. If everybody will please rise.
Let's pray together. Lord, I am humbled to be here and to offer prayer to you on behalf of these. I'm grateful that these, our leaders, are still calling upon you to come and to give aid and comfort and wisdom and courage. So I pray that you would do that, that you would give us the wisdom to lead the folks here in Boynton Beach, that we could indeed protect and preserve and to encourage one another as we desire to live together in love and in grace. So we pray that you would descend upon this meeting and give instruction, give wisdom, give direction, give joy as we seek your face in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. McNutt, I just want to thank you for taking your time to come and give us the invocation. We appreciate it greatly. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to agenda approval. Any additions, deletions, corrections to the agenda? The attorney has one addition, B-13B. She's going to be asking for a closed-door session before one of our next meetings whenever they find out. There's some lawsuits coming, and when they get that date, then they'll ask which meeting they want to do the closed door on. Okay?
Mayor, can I pull 6G? G as in good.
Yes. 6G, okay. Yes.
May I pull I-O-P-N-R?
I?
O-P-N-R.
P and R, okay.
And I'd like to pull a couple. 6C and 6F.
D and F?
E and...
E and F.
C.
C and F.
F as in frank?
That's already got pulled.
Got it.
You pulled F, right?
I didn't have F pulled.
Any others? Any other additions?
Yeah. You pulled G.
Yeah, so far I've got pulled C, F, I, O, P, Q, and R. Right?
And G, too.
G?
G.
No, I didn't get that one.
G as in good.
Okay. Okay. I don't think we pulled Q, do we? No.
No.
No, no, we didn't pull Q, did we? Did somebody pull Q?
No.
Okay, okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Motion to approve.
Motion seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Still the motion unanimous. Informational items by members of the commission. I'll start with Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Only a couple of things. I attended the Veterans Day celebration along with the rest of the city commission, and I also attended a League of Cities, District 2 and 3 luncheon. That's all.
Commissioner Cosello.
Just the veterans ceremony. It was a great ceremony, and Tom Kaiser did another great job, and I salute him. Thank you.
Commissioner Merker.
Yes, I'd like to read something from Lori Wilkerson. She wants everyone to know that the Reading Oasis opens Friday, November 21st at 3:30 p.m. at the Rolling Green. The public is invited. The Fire Benevolent Association, the Police Department, education advocates, and yours truly have supported this association. So once again, the Reading Oasis opens Friday, November 21st at 3:30 at Rolling Green.
Do you delete?
And that's it. I'll say.
Okay. Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't need to pull any, I don't need to say anything. I'm just saying I did everything that almost everybody here. I just want to wish everybody that's present, have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager, did you want anything from staff? Anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All I have is that I did attend the veterans ceremony and also I attended the Saturday Harvest Fest, which the chamber sponsored up there at the Intercoastal Park. And I know our children's museum was present with some programs, and we had a better turnout this year than last year. Last year was raining on us, so we had a lot better turnout this time. So there's a lot of games and things for the kids there, so it was nice. I think each year it'll grow a little bit better. Also, I attended a meeting at Hunter's Run where they donated over $8,500 to different community things. They donated to our police department, our fire department, our Care Dad Center, Bethesda Hospital, was the, the poor, place where the poor, where the people... The caring center, yeah. Carrying center. But the, also for our, for the city, for the parks and rec, they gave, it was $3,000 for the, the park, the...
Fountain, wasn't it?
No, the park.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Barrier-free park.
Barrier-free park.
Yeah, yeah.
They're going to provide bicycle racks and water fountain, I believe, for bear. They have been donating to that park ever since we started. So every year, Hunter's Run really steps up with their civic pride in their pocketbooks to give money to the city for different organizations. We just want to thank them and commend them for this effort. We really appreciate it.
Mayor, say something?
Sure.
What I'd like to say is I live there, and what I recommend that we do is, they, the board at Hunter's Run is always looking for charitable, worthwhile donations to give. And this time, they stepped up to the plate again, only this time it was viewed and heard by everybody, either in the press or on TV. So they want it, they want you to know, since I lived there and I'm the representative there, that this is who they are. This is the type of people that live there. They care for the community.
Okay, I want also to announce that our employees graciously donated over 2,835 food items and $312 for the community caring center, almost tripling last year's total. The utilities department delivered the items in two vans tonight, and the community center volunteers were so appreciative. On behalf of everyone who donated, I personally want to thank each and every one of you for providing a 250 Thanksgiving dinners to needy families in our community and providing additional items for community caring center's food pantry. I just want to say for everybody who came and donated those items, when you sit down to your Thanksgiving dinner, you know in your heart that you made it possible for somebody else to enjoy that day, too. We thank you. Under announcements, in observance of the Jewish holiday of Hanukkah, the second meeting in December will be held on Monday, December 15th, 2014, at 6:30 p.m. in the City Commission Chambers. Normally, our meeting's on Tuesday because of Hanukkah, we're going to hold it on Monday. So if you want to mark your calendar. Now, the city announces the winners of the first annual Boynton Beach Focus on Planning photo contest, which include Hope Spears, People's Choice Award, and Youth Category Award, Felicia Houtenbrink, Adult Category Award, and Ellen Buddhist, the Special Mayor's Award. And I'll turn that over to staff, which is going to present those.
Good afternoon. This is Gigi Chasou with the Development Department. We are very proud of presenting these awards to all these fantastic photographers that really depicted the built environment in Boynton Beach. And this one that we have here is from Mrs. Spears, and she got the People's Choice Award. And is Hope Spears here? Please come over. With over 800 votes, she won this award. Mayor, would you like to come over and please honor us with your presence?
The Focus on Planning Photo Contest, the People's Choice Award, is presented to Hope Spears in recognition for the artistic merit depicting Boynton Beach's urban design. We thank you for your participation and all your great effort. Thank you so much.
Hope, she also won the Youth Award for another picture that she submitted, which represents Las Ventanas. As you can see, it's fantastic colors, so thank you very much for your eye on photographing.
Thank you. This is the Focus on Planning Photo Contest Youth Category Award, presented to Hope Spears in recognition of the artistic merit and visual impact depicting Boynton Beach's urban design. With these awards, they're also getting a gift certificate, an amount of $75 at the Boynton Mall.
The next award goes to Felicia Houtenbrink. And you can see it's depicting Casa Costa, and look at the reflection on the water. So it's the combination of nature and built environment. Thank you very much, Felicia.
This is the Adult Category Award, Felicia Houtenbrink, in recognition of the artistic merit and visual impact depicting Boynton's urban design. I was really impressed with the reflection in the water of the building. You can see it both ways, so it's very good. Great job. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, we have the Mayor's Award. This is something that he picked himself because of the meaning, which is depicting our Galaxy Building, which is the greenest building on Earth. So Ellen Buddhist, please.
This is Ellen Buddhist, in recognition of the artistic merit and visual impact depicting Boynton Beach urban design. We're so proud of this school in Boynton Beach. It's a state-of-the-art. It's one of the best. Everybody that comes is so impressed. Nobody in Palm Beach County has a school that equals this. If you haven't been there, you really need to go. It's unbelievable to tour this and see what they're doing there. Fantastic.
You can come visit me. I'm the media specialist in all the windows on the left. That's our space for the media center.
Great job. Okay, that takes us to administrate, no, it takes us to public audience. Anybody in the public who wishes to address the commission on items not on the agenda may do so at this time. We ask that you come forward to give your name and address for the record, and try to make your comments in a three-minute time period.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jonathan J. Dogg Letterman. I reside at 9141 Sunrise Lakes Boulevard, number 102, Sunrise, Florida, 33322. And tonight, I am here to tell you about an exciting program. It's the South Florida Gold of the American Basketball Association. Yes, the ABA is back, and it's here in Boynton Beach, and we are doing some great things. We're off to a 6-0 start. The power rankings just came out for the week, and we are ranked number two in the nation out of 90 teams. We are community-oriented. Every one of our home games has been designated to help a specific charity. We've helped some homeless shelters, the Forgotten Soldiers Outreach Program. The games are played at Boynton Beach Community High School. We want to invite everybody out to our game on the 13th of December. That game will be 7:00 p.m., and on the 14th, it'll be at 4:00 p.m. We have gone international. We have a team from Tokyo, the Shizuka Jimrats, and they'll be playing us at Boynton Beach Community High School. For employees of the city, make sure you come and show your ID. You get in for free. So make sure you come and do that. And then on December 20th, we're going to have a great day. It's going to be a slam dunk cancer night at 7:00 p.m. That game's also on ESPN through ESPN3, so we're going to bring a national spotlight to Boynton Beach, and that'll be our fundraiser for the American Cancer Society Relay for Life. In this case, it'll be the West Aboca Relay, because that's the relay that I'm involved with. And being the public address announcer, I get to choose the charity sometimes, so it's a great thing. We've got a great group of guys, 6-0 on the season, averaging 175 points. We invite you guys to come on out, visit us online at www.sflgold.com, and you can also follow us on Facebook. It's South Florida Gold hyphen ABA. In case you don't know, the hyphen, it's that little dash. I had to explain that to a few people the other day. They took grammar out of our schools, so sometimes we have to explain it. The hyphen's the little dash, not the underscore. But it is a great group of guys. I've got Charles Coley, he's a former Harlem Globetrotter who plays for us downtown. Freddie Brown just got invited to the NBA D-League Draft. High-flying, fast-paced, 98 feet, 48 minutes, actually 95 feet, but we give them a chance to inbound the ball. And just a great time, very family-oriented, proud to be here in the city of Boynton Beach, and hope for great things, and hope to bring a championship home to the city of Boynton Beach. And I thank you for your time.
You're ranked second out of 90 teams. I think you're well on your way. Congratulations.
Come on.
Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue, Boynton Beach. I'm here tonight to give an update on BBMHAC, which stands for Boynton Beach Mental Health Advisory Committee. We have a number-one goal, which is to build capacity for an education and awareness campaign. To achieve that goal, we have six objectives, and I would like to just quickly tell you about them. The first objective was to compile a list of frequently asked questions and responses about mental health and mental illness. The list can be distributed electronically, handed out at health fairs and community events, placed in libraries and other public places to help combat stigma. The status of that particular objective, the first draft of this list will be discussed at our November meeting of the committee, which is starting this Thursday, day after tomorrow. Our second objective was to create a BBMHAC logo to provide branding and recognition. The logo will ultimately become a recognized symbol of the community's effort to make Boynton Beach a model city for mental health. It will appear on flyers, banners, signs, letterheads, posters, t-shirts, et cetera, as we move into high-visibility activities and events. The status of that particular one is students in the art classes at Boynton Beach High School are currently engaged in a contest to create the winning logo design. We have several meetings with the principal, Fred Baruch, and the art instructor, who are both very excited about the opportunity to get the kids engaged in a community project that will impact the whole community. The contest, the contest ends next week, and entries will be judged by the Boynton Beach Arts Commission, which is headed up by Debbie Coles-Dabay. The winner will be announced at the December 16th commission meeting, and will receive a $100 gift card. The third objective was to create a BBMHAC presence on the city's website. That is still being explored. The fourth objective was to cultivate relationship potential with the committee and Boynton Beach High School. The logo contest is doing that. The status of that is that Fred Baruch is interested in our suggestion to work with the psychology teacher and to schedule mental health professionals...
Go ahead. Continue your...
And to schedule mental health professionals to speak with the students about considering a career in the field of mental health. So, and Dr. Robertson of the school board has expressed concern about the severe shortage of African-Americans, mental health professionals. This could be an important first step in addressing that particular need. And I'm about finished. Our fifth objective was to schedule tools of the mental health facilities that are already in existence to learn more about them and their services, and to increase the visibility of the community. Today, the first tool was scheduled of the Palm Beach Abilitation Center in Lake Worth. We also plan to visit the large place and the South Counter Mental Health Center also being scheduled. Lastly, the objective was to draft a plan of events on mental health for the month of May 2015 that will engage community leaders, businesses, families, service clubs, interfaith communities, schools, and et cetera in the planning. The status of that, we will be on the November meeting on Thursday to discuss that further. We're moving forward, and we thank you for your cooperation and your support.
I want to thank you for your report, and I wasn't worried about three minutes because it's important that this report get back to the commission like you've just done. And I want to say, I want to tell the commission, I'm really pleased with the way you've jumped right off at the start. You've got some short-term objectives there that you're working on. You've got a plan. You're following it. And most important, you're including the children, the kids, the students, because we all know and hear about the terrible shootings around the country of schoolchildren, and a lot of that is based on mental problems. So to get them involved early, let them know that there is a concern and there are other alternatives, that's really important. So I'm really pleased to hear that you guys are working in that area. Thank you for your report. The commissioners have any comments?
Thank you. I have one. You know, it's not on your report, but Reverend Hay, I'm just saying, since you are a certified chaplain, I think you ought to need to tell the citizens, you know, how you arrived there. Toot your own horn, sir.
On last week, or the week before, I, the week before, I spent one entire week in classes from 5:00 in the morning to, from 8:00 in the morning until 5:00 in the afternoon, taking a class in chaplaincy. And my concept of what a chaplain was, was completely shattered. I have, I've gained a new appreciation for what chaplaincy is all about. And I came back and had a great talk with our chief, shared some ideas with him. He's all behind it, and we're going to be moving this program forward for the city of Boynton Beach and for the police department. Okay? So I am now, I got my little certificate, and I am now a certified chaplain.
Police chaplain.
Police chaplain.
Police chaplain. Certified police chaplain. Believe it or not, there's a difference between just being a regular chaplain and a police chaplain versus a fire chaplain, et cetera. There are a whole bunch of categories, and I was very pleased to, out of the, you say toot my horn, right? Out of the 100... Out of the, out of the 100 questions that we had on the exam, okay? I told them I was too old to take a test, but, but I got a 98 out of 100.
All right. Very good.
Good evening.
Good evening. Suzanne Ross, Schoolhouse Children's Museum. For a quick update, October did end on a high note with a successful Schoolhouse Spooktacular Haunted House as part of the immensely successful Haunted Pirate Fest this year. The haunted house was expanded to include both floors, required over 35 cast and volunteer crew members at admissions, and welcomed over 2,500 guests through the museum.
Wow.
It was pretty amazing. It was pretty, it was pretty amazing. We had a lot of good responses to it, and we will continue and expand it again next year. So far, the first half of November has been very strong with both solid visitation and program attendance, and we have a variety of activities and special programs coming up, including this Saturday, Make a Thankful Tree, in recognition of what children are most thankful for as appropriate for the upcoming holiday. Friday, after Thanksgiving, we have a special storytime, the reading of the book, Give a Mouse a Cookie, and cookie decorating. In other words, if you give a mouse a cookie, he will decorate it. Friday Fun Days are back, every Friday in December, with themes such as Celebrate Walt Disney's Birthday, Make Holiday Ornaments, Make Holiday Wrapping Paper, and the Friday After Christmas, the museum's version of How to Celebrate Boxing Day. There'll also be a Holiday Gift Bazaar on Sunday, December 7th, and Hanukkah with Miss Helen on December 18th, and there is much more to come. I will announce next time. Finally, we really do wish to once again thank everyone who participated in the haunted house and the haunted pirate fest in general, and a special thank you to all of those who assisted the schoolhouse and the various components of the event that supported the museum. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good job.
Suzanne? Can you explain Boxing Day? I'm married to a Canadian. That's a big holiday.
Well, keep in mind, this is the schoolhouses' version, so quite honestly, I don't know the answer.
I hope it's not my wife's version.
Just think children and boxes, and put the two together, and you, and we have something very fun in store.
Thank you.
Very great.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Veronica Brack. I'm the new manager with the Boynton Beach Mall, and I just wanted to come and say hello. An intro, a short introduction. Basically, I've been in Boynton for about six weeks. I really, I've enjoyed it. Everyone is very friendly, and I hope I am here. I mean, I really, we are in a great central location in South Florida, and Boynton Beach Mall has so much potential that we are targeting a lot of changes, great changes, in the next couple of years. So I'm hoping to stay part of that, and we're also open, one of our main goals is to target with the community. That's very, that's like on our number-one list, myself and my marketing director, Poonam Patel. So reach out to her for any community events that you need to reach out to the community. We have, you know, a lot of our shoppers and families are, you know, within the mall, so if you would like to reach out to the community with your organization, public, private, profit, nonprofit, give us a call, and, you know, we could set you up in the food court and organize various events for the community. So we are available, and like I said, that's one of our number-one goals within the next 2015, 16, so.
We're glad to have you aboard. May I ask where you come from?
I'm from Virginia.
Virginia.
Uh-huh. I have about 15 years' experience with retail real estate, and I come from a leasing, sales, and marketing background, management, so I'm looking forward to a lot of opportunities at the Boynton Beach Mall in all divisions, and so far, so good. I mean, we have a great team there now, and very much looking forward to working with the community and promoting different organizations and partnering in events and bringing, you know, the community into our property. And like I said, we have a lot of great changes to interior, exterior, and just surrounding the entire community. So I'm sure I will be seeing and speaking with a lot of you in the near future.
Well, we're, we look forward to working in cooperation with you and the mall and the city as partners, and I think you'll find they'll have a lot of advantages here. Just for instance, like I think tonight in Virginia, it'll probably be in the 28 degrees or so. So welcome aboard.
My daughter is in Roanoke right now, so she's like, "Mom, it's 35 degrees and snowing," so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the next time you come up, you don't have to be nervous. They just look bad.
Oh, anyone else here? Commissioner, I have not on the agenda. Seeing none, we will move on to administrative. There are no appointments to be made tonight, so we'll go to the consent agenda. The first item was pulled, item C, I believe, was Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes, I'd like a little staff explanation of how this works and who funds it.
This is approved amendment number one to the interlocal agreement between Palm Beach County and the city of Boynton Beach for Oyer Park Boat Access Channel dredging.
Good evening. Jeff Libriga, Director of Public Works and Engineering. A little bit over a year ago, we entered into an interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County to have them dredge the channel from our boat ramps at Oyer Park out to the intercoastal waterway. We entered into that agreement frankly because the county was getting ready to do some of their own dredging and do other work within Palm Beach County, and we were able to gain some economic, some economy of scale by the cubic yard price to have them do the work for us. They bid the work, they designed the work, and they permitted the work. As a turnkey operation, we simply pay for the number of cubic yards that are excavated on our channel. Their contract... Their contractor, the interlocal agreement, calls for final payment and inspections upon the completion of the contract. Other portions of their contract are running late. This is just simply a housekeeping item so that our interlocal agreement maintains consistent with when the completion date is with their agreement with their contractor.
How much did we save working with the county?
Uh, wouldn't know unless we bid, but I would, um,
Estimate.
My engineering estimate would be thirty to forty percent.
And that's in, how much is that in dollars?
Uh, it could be anywhere from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars.
So they didn't have to do this, this was just kind of a goodwill gesture?
That's exactly correct. It, it saves the taxpayers a whole money across the board.
So if the city committee, or county commission was irritated at us for throwing a gift back in their face that this, something like this could go away?
Uh, not this interlocal agreement.
Not this one, but the next one?
I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, we should take the four and a half acres at Lake Gata because these kind of things may be in jeopardy. Thanks.
Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Jeff, um, my understanding is this, what, every three to five years is this?
That's correct.
Yeah, so it's something that's continuous, it's a plus for us.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's fairly quick process for that channel or the boat club channel to silt in, so this is something that needs to be performed.
Is there a motion to approve item C?
Still moved.
Second. Motion is second, and a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, what was that? Did anybody pull D?
No.
No, okay, we'll go to F.
F.
Proposed, who pulled F?
Uh, that would be another.
I pulled G.
Interlocal agreement where county's helping Boynton.
Let's say drowning prevention coalition, learn to swim program, which provides vouchers to the public that may be redeemed for swimming lessons at the John Denson Pool. Any questions?
Yeah, so who's paying for it and how's it work?
This is a program that's funded through the county, through their drowning prevention coalition program, which basically provides vouchers for Palm Beach County resident, uh, children, uh, which allows them basically then to have access to swimming lessons throughout the county, including our pool, and through this voucher to get the swimming lessons for free, and it's up to a maximum of fifty dollars.
About a hundred and fifty kids a year go through it.
Good, so this, this depends on the goodwill of the county to keep it going?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Discussion.
No discussion?
Right, you know, when we keep saying that it's the goodwill of the county, we have to recognize that we do pay money to the county, we are county taxpayers, I'm just saying, so it's really not no goodwill, I'm just saying, Boynton is getting back some of their benefits, that's all, continue to move, sir.
Yeah, the county gives us to other cities, not just Boynton.
Thank you.
All right, have a motion, then, second, was there a second? Any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, so the motion unanimous. Item G, this is authorized, signed agreement with Palm Beach County, city maintain interoperability with its radio system and the counties.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I, just a couple of questions on this, this P-25 compliant, does this tie into with the change that's coming in the next year or so, will we have to, uh, buy into the radio equipment, new equipment?
Yes, this, this, um, interlocal agreement will allow, uh, the city to partner with Palm Beach County, and I think Boca and Delray are going to be part of the, um, the interlocal as well to, to jointly fund the hiring of a consultant to do a needs assessment and financial, um, analysis of what the cities, what we're, what we'll be facing to migrate into a, a new radio system. And I see Audrey's here from Palm Beach County, who is the P-25 guru by, whether you like, like it or not, right? I think she's, um, she's a facilities, but I'm not sure, certain of your title, facilities director?
I'm Facilities Development Operations Director for Palm Beach County.
And I know Audrey's spearheading the project for the county. If, technically, I can't begin to speak to the, all the technology on the P-25, but maybe one of you could talk a little bit about it?
Just, I just got some questions, and then you can probably expand on it. This P-25, is, is it going to be a whole new type system that we're putting into, uh, that the county's putting into, uh, effect?
We don't know, we are preparing a vendor-neutral RFP. It is a new technology, it uses non-proprietary, uh, protocols so that there's greater interoperability in the event of, uh, agencies having to talk to each other, and there's multiple vendors that can bid that, uh, technology.
And so our share of that is thirty thousand, the thirty thousand?
Right.
Okay. The, the other thing I want to talk about in the future, when we do have to change over to this new system, we, Boynton, when I say we, Boynton Beach, our dispatch, our fire departments and, and police departments, we are going to be responsible for buying the new, the new equipment, is that correct?
That's correct, you currently have your own radio system, which uses, in layman's term, our brain to operate, and so you have your own system, you will be replacing it with a vendor, and, um, right now, uh, the intent is to continue to use our brain, but if we choose a vendor that you don't like, you could go your own way. So all of the decision-making, uh, for the city retain, is maintained by the city, um, to do what we do or do something different, but the goal is, in the end, to still be, have that same level of interoperability.
Now, I, the numbers, the rough numbers that I hear coming out, and I have nothing to verify, this is like between two and two and a half million dollars Boynton's cost to buy into this system. Would that be fair to say?
Um, you're, well, I can't tell you what the number for the replacement of your system is, but the term buying in, you are not buying into the county's system.
That was probably a poor choice of word.
Yeah, you're replacing your existing system, and it'll continue to be connected in the same manner with the same level of interoperability to ours.
Okay, let me ask you this, if our dispatch system was county-run by the county, would the county then pick up that, for lack of a better number, two million dollar, uh, cost to go into this new system?
Communications, um, dispatch service, and law enforcement and fire service are four different decisions that you have to make. Um, with the decision on centralized dispatch, the county does own your radios and purchase the radios for. It doesn't change whether or not you may, even if you were to go centralized dispatch, you'd still have to make choices about replacing your radio system, because there are four different decisions.
Okay, even with that change, though, would the county pick up that cost of the new, of the new equipment?
They're not picking up the cost of the new equipment because, uh, the system is yours. If fire were to come centralized dispatch, they would be on our system totally, so they would not be using Boynton's radio system anymore if they were to come centralized dispatch. But the part of the project that we're working on has nothing to do with the subscriber units, the actual radios that the officers and the firefighters are carrying, it has to do with the network and the system, so that would be the towers.
All right, so the network and system.
Exactly.
Uh, but once again, the, the question is, if we had, if we went centralized with the county as far as dispatch, the county, whatever equipment was needed for dispatching, would the county pick up that cost?
In other words, if we were centralized now.
Centralized now.
If you were centralized now, our dispatchers would be doing your dispatch, so yes, it would be a county cost.
So, so it'd be no cost, no cost to us?
I can't speak directly to all of the costs associated, but it would be riding on our equipment.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. So, the way I'm hearing it, you have open protocol, and if one system entity uses Harris, you know, uses Motorola, they'll still be able to talk to each other? Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question for the city manager, and that is that, uh, if we go this route, have we budgeted, we budgeted money in the budget for it?
We are using, um, what we know as our twelve-fifty money, which is a portion of the funding that we get through the county through, through tickets, um, and we will be utilizing that funding for this, for this study, a portion of our funding toward this study.
Okay, but that's not that two-point-five million that the vice mayor spoke of?
No, 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 that's, no, we have not, we have not budgeted yet for, until we can get this needs assessment done and know what we would need, what we're going to need to budget for, they're doing a financial assessment too for us, then we, we're going to need to budget quickly, um, for the next few years to replace our system.
All right, when will the need assessment be ready for us?
That I don't know, Audrey, if we enter, how long is it going to take to do the study?
We should have, um, be ready to put the RFP on the street in approximately April, so you should have a pretty good idea of the cost estimate sometime prior to that.
For the new fiscal year, going into the new fiscal year.
I'd like to ask this commission too, uh, and I know I, I've had this discussion with, uh, the fire chief, and I know he's not totally on board with it, because we've talked about possible delays between police and fire, fire and police, as far as dispatching goes, but I think that we need to maybe, uh, assess maybe going county as far as dispatching goes, uh, just for, we're talking some big numbers here that we're going to have to come up with pretty quickly, and, uh, if we were centralized with, already with the county, uh, that would be taken care of for us, as, as I understand it. So, I, I would ask, just-
Can you look at that too? I'm just saying, uh, as the city manager and bring that information back to us, I'm just saying, you know, we need to look at all options.
Correct.
That's what I'm-
Is that something we can do?
Um, I don't, yeah, of course, if, it's, but it's a matter of time, I, we need to, to consult with our fire chief and police chief on what, the amount of time it takes to do.
Yeah, it'll be sometime next year, because our PA is going out to April next year.
Yeah, I would want a, a consensus of the board or a vote by the board to, to move forward with doing that, it's going to, it will take some time and some staff resources.
Take that vote, sir.
Not until April, I'm just saying, I'm ready to vote, I'm just saying, it's something that we need to be looking into.
All right. Go ahead.
Uh, if we're going to take a vote tonight, I'd like to hear what Chief Carter says, since you spoke to him, and if I heard correctly, uh, you have a different opinion, uh, on what Commissioner Casella's, Vice Commissioner Casella was saying.
Vice mayor, not vice commissioner, where are you at? I don't know.
Wintertime.
Ray Carter, Fire Chief, uh, yeah, Vice Mayor Casella and I did have a conversation about this approximately a month ago or so. Um, there are some clear differences between the two dispatch systems, um, specifically, some of the protocols that we use in our dispatch center are not used in the county center. Um, again, there's clear differences, but like the vice mayor says, if we migrated to the county system for fire rescue dispatching, it would just be fire rescue. It still means that the police department would have the dispatch center here, and the primary answering point would continue to be here in Boynton Beach, and then the call would have to be transferred from our primary answering center here to the county dispatch before our units would be dispatched here in Boynton Beach. So it's an additional step.
So are you saying, excuse me, so are you saying that it will take longer simply? More complicated?
It will take longer, it may only be a few seconds depending on the call type and the transfer time.
Okay, simply, uh, so you're advocating to, to keep, go along with what is proposed here instead of county-wide?
Again, I think the item you're talking about tonight is a whole separate item from actual dispatch services. We're talking about a radio system, and tonight you're only talking about a study to, to look at, uh, again, for them to put the RFP out on the street to, again, get the P-25 system in place, which is, again, a protocol issue as to how the two systems are unlike, I guess I should call it, unlike hardware can communicate with one another. They're two separate items, one doesn't have anything to do with the other.
And, and I have no problem voting on the RFP to do that, but I, I'd also like to maybe get a study and, and to see what, I know this community is already doing that, right, Chief, and we, this wouldn't be unique to Boynton Beach.
No, there are, there are other communities that use county to dispatch their fire service.
Correct.
Um, and most of them, again, have that same situation where their primary answering point for the telephone call of nine-one-one remains at that city, and then it has to be transferred to the county fire rescue dispatch center in order for their units to be dispatched. It's not an uncommon system.
I think we need to move forward with the item for us tonight, and we can get into those discussions as that goes on down the road.
Well, like, the city manager said, it's going to take some time for staff, I'd just like to make the motion that we, you know, give staff permission to go forward to get that information at their leisure.
That's, I don't have a problem with that.
Sorry, the motion I'd like to make is that we, uh, let the city manager, let staff go forward to, to see about, uh, the, uh, the pros and cons of going, uh, county with our dispatch system.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous. Is there a motion on item G?
I'm all for motion, right, that we accept, promotes resolution R-14-116.
Uh, 118.
118.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, so the motion unanimous. Thank you. Item I, um, strongly, resolution strongly objecting to, uh, recert action taken by the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners to withdraw Palm Beach County from the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council.
Lori?
Yes, sir.
Need your brain. Um, we have used recently Treasure Coast, uh, Planning Council, and it seemed, uh, from all of us, we were very happy. Uh, my question is, why the withdrawal from the county? Why are they, um, suggesting this, and yet we, I mean, why would we want to go along with this thought when I believe that they've done a very nice job for us?
Right, and that's why we brought this resolution forward to you, there are, most of the municipalities in the county are not in favor of leaving the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council and utilizing the South, uh, South Florida, the South Florida Regional Planning Council, um, which is primarily, I think, Monroe, Dade, and Broward Counties. The Treasure Coast that, that we're involved with now takes us up to St. Lucie, Martin Counties, um, we share a lot of similar issues in the, I can't say northern counties, but the, the upper tier in Treasure Coast, um, we have had great response and cooperation and partnerships with the Treasure Coast, um, in fact, they just did our downtown redevelopment plan concepts for us, and, and they've been, we've worked with them on obtaining grants to do studies and assist us with our land development regulation changes, uh, we, we've worked very well with them for many years. And I can't answer why the county did that, I know it was a, something that kind of came about quickly, I heard something about it's a little bit cheaper, but I, I don't know the reason why, honestly, um, it came, came out of nowhere. Do you, Mayor?
I do, yeah, they, the county was upset with the regional, Treasure Regional Planning Council because they, I think they took a, uh, positive approach to all aboard, and the county was upset with that, so they, they came up with this, but I attend the League of Cities, and I tell you, all the cities voted unanimously to oppose that and come out with a resolution showing that they're not in favor of that, that's why we discussed it at the last meeting, and we asked the city to bring back a, a, a resolution for us to vote on.
Did the county actually vote on, or was it a four-three vote, I know, but was that just to explore the possibility?
And I'm not even, I'm not certain of that, I, I thought they voted, but you had mentioned that, so I know-
I talked to county commissioner, and they said, I think that was just to inquire whether to go the South Florida.
Well, and I, and if that is the case, I know we're, we're following in, in consensus with the, if we approve this resolution with the Palm Beach County League of Cities, to basically, if that's the case, make the statement to the county that we do not want to see them do that.
I'm all in favor of this thing with the Treasure Coast.
Okay. Is there a motion on item I?
Still moved.
Second.
A motion is second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, so the motion unanimous. Item O.
Mr. Mayor, before we go to item O, I'm sorry, but Jay, we need to just to discuss that, I'm just saying, we are approving the closing of City Hall December 26th, that is, they paid holiday for the employees here in the city of Boynton.
Is there a motion to pull item J from the consent?
Motion.
Second.
A motion is second, it's approved closing City Hall on Friday, December 26th, 2014. The reason we want to do that is because Christmas, of course, is, falls on the 25th, and, uh, there's Christmas Eve, and most people be gone anyway, and it's a Friday, so people come in, they're being basically a skeleton crew anyway, so we thought, as a, sort of a Christmas bonus to all our staff to close the City Hall on December 26th, which is the day after Christmas.
And Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate you for saying Christmas, motion to approve.
Second.
A motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
So the motion unanimous.
And Mayor, if I may, I'm sure I can speak for all of the employee population to say thank you. I know this will come as a, a very special, uh, appreciation from the employees for, for providing them the opportunity to have a, a longer holiday, uh, weekend, and not be off Wednesday, Thursday, then have to come back on Friday. Um, I can guarantee you, they all say thank you very much.
They deserve it.
Yes.
They deserve it, they work hard.
Well deserved.
Item O, approve funding in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for the rent reimbursement grant to Copper Top Brewery, Commerce Road in Boynton Beach, is there, there's, somebody pulled it?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
I, I pulled O and P for one simple question, how many jobs have been created, uh, from this company? How many jobs have been created from this company?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Thank you for that last item. Woo-hoo, on behalf of the staff. But to answer your question, the applicant is actually here, and I'd like them, if you're willing, to come up and introduce themselves and talk to you about their business, because we're really excited to have Copper Top in town. Come on up, guys. You can use the podium over there.
By the way, I was told I, from up above, I better vote for that. I mean, I can't say names or anything, but-
Can we consider this happy hour?
We like beer.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Commission for having us here. We greatly appreciate the consideration that you are giving us to, one, open the business in the community, and, two, for the potential grant. Just a little bit about our story. Matt and I met about four years ago, and we met through mutual friends, where we were helping a number of people in the brewing community in South Florida get started, some that are even in Boynton Beach today. And just a little bit about our story, we have rich backgrounds in the brewing industry. Matt's got 15 years of experience as a brewmaster in the South Florida area. He's one of the most recognized brewers in the state of Florida and in the region in the southeastern United States, winning multiple awards. I've got a background starting a sweetwater brewing company out of Atlanta, which is now the 17th largest craft brewing company in the country, and it's growing into the top 10. So, you know, we're not two guys that are just, we're just homebrewing in their garages. We're guys that have a lot of experience, and what we figured out was that, you know, we really wanted to focus on a manufacturing company. And we looked throughout the region of South Florida, Miami, Fort Lauderdale, West Palm Beach, all the way up, almost into even north of Jupiter. And we settled on Boynton because we felt it was a great location. It's central to the region, and just the number of spaces that were available to us, we thought would be great. You know, we planned the manufacturing line. We bought high-end North American equipment. We didn't go to China. We bought our equipment from Oregon, Canada, so it's high-end, high-end, high-end equipment. And we focused on building a quality, scalable, you know, long-term business here that's really truly going to be integrated into the community. So when you were asking about jobs, we focused on three key areas, manufacturing. There will be manufacturing positions. We've roughly estimated between four and six manufacturing positions in the first year. One to help in the brew house. Obviously, we'll have multiple brew, we'll have one brewmaster, which is Matt. We'll have multiple brewmasters in the location, working at any given time. There'll be people in the brew house doing cleaning functions. There'll be people in the brew house with chemistry backgrounds to measure the types of beer that we're making, the alcoholic content of it. So the positions just aren't, you know, low-end, menial, cleaning jobs. There's jobs ranging from, in the brew house, from, you know, cleaning to chemistry backgrounds, people with, you know, degrees from FAU. If we go into the taproom, the taproom, while it's important to us, it's not the only avenue of our business, we will probably employ between eight to 10 people in the taproom. A taproom manager, multiple bar staff, multiple people in there, running it on a regular basis. I think the key that differentiates Matt and I, though, and the reason why we think this is an even better investment, is our goal isn't just to open a bar in a warehouse district in Boynton Beach. I'm sorry.
Thank you. I don't want to cut you off, but I don't care how many applications you have open. If Commissioner Merker put in one, deny him, please. Go ahead.
He'll drink all the profits.
Sorry, this is the first time I've ever done this before, so. I want you guys to know, we really thought through this. So Matt and I, going into the job creation, so the taproom would generate a significant amount of opportunity there. Where it goes into different types of opportunity is when we go into statewide distribution, which is clearly, as we've discussed with the CRA, our vision, is not to just be a local brew house here, but actually, we want to be a regional brewing company and ultimately get into the southeastern United States. So we'll be looking at marketing people, supply chain distribution, individuals to help us with those types of growth initiatives. Obviously, as you're aware, we have the brew house under construction right now. We're partnering with the city. We're hiring local contractors. Our engineering firm is a local firm. Our architect's a local firm. Our electricians are local, local people. And, you know, so we're generating a lot of opportunity, we feel, in the community. And that hasn't even gone into marketing activities and things of that nature.
I think you answered his question.
Answered, except for the question ahead. Will you hire me? I don't know what I'm qualified for.
We'll hire. Perhaps. So, yeah, so that's, that's what we're doing.
How'd you come up with the name Copper Top?
My lovely wife is a redhead, and she-
Enough said. I'd just like to add, Mr. Mayor, I think this is great. As you know, we already have a, we have the Deuce South Brewery here. Maybe that's our niche in South Florida. Maybe we become the brew city of South Florida. I have nothing, I have no problem with that. I see, you know, I'd love to see more of these breweries pop up here and, you know, put us right on the map. And I thank you for choosing Boynton. Thank you so much.
But last month, you were saying marijuana.
We all was.
We go for the second-best thing.
Is there a, is there a motion on item O?
So moved.
Second.
A motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose, so the motion unanimous. Item P, approve funding in amount of $15,000 for commercial build-out grant to Copper Top Brewery. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion is unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Excuse me, I think it's item R.
Yes.
Yeah. Go.
After speaking with Lori about the legislative sessions that are available in Tallahassee, last year, I believe the mayor went in March. This year, there's two dates, January and March. I would like to volunteer. I feel my background, my knowledge, my interest in government and legislatively, I'd like to extend it to not just having the mayor, but having someone on the commission also go. Two heads are better than one plus Lori. I think a lot can be accomplished. I think this is a very important thing that we, the government, get involved with, hopefully every year, so we can learn a little more and then propose a little more to better the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I don't have a problem with this. I'm just saying, as long as it's done on a rotating basis, and two heads are better than one, but sometimes one might talk too much, Commissioner Merker. So I'm just saying, I don't have a problem with him going, but we just need to be cognizant of the time that you will be having in Tallahassee, sir, if you go.
Maybe I'll move there, then you'll be happy.
There's, um-
Send him.
Well, we're also interested in the cost of that and all, but I don't have a problem if the Commission would like to see Commissioner Merker go to the legislative one, and then I would go, and me and maybe two other commissioners could go up to the county, Palm Beach County Days in March, I guess it is, so.
I was thinking, Mayor, we'd both go.
Well, it's more money if we both went.
But my understanding and the reason I say both of us is the fact that it's, I'll phrase it this way, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lori, it's more personal, it's more one-on-one, where in March, it's not just Boynton Beach, it's other cities going. And this way, if we truly hear and learn about something, that, again, I'm not being funny, two heads are better than one, and maybe something can truly come out of it, so.
Okay, the Commission desire?
My desire is that, I don't care about him going, I'm just saying, because of the cost, you could split it up. I'm just saying, between the next time, I'm just saying, we have funds there, and I'm just saying, if he's so eager to go, and he want to represent the city, he is. I don't know about better than one, but I'm all for motion that he goes. It's fine with me.
Who would like to go to, on the, he's going legislative. Who wants to go to the Palm Beach County Days? Anybody particularly like to go to that?
I definitely would like to go to that.
So would I.
Mike?
Yes.
You'd like to go?
Sure. Everybody else is going.
Well, we can go three.
I'm not going. I'm not going. I've already been. I'm just saying, you know, as a learning experience, I went, you know, farther back. I'm just saying, it's nice to see new blood, new faces.
Just getting back to that, the first time up there, I, and there's no doubt that Mr. Merker is definitely qualified in that area, but I think for appearance-wise, I think it's important to have our elected leader, and you are the leader, you're elected, you are the mayor of Boynton Beach, along with the manager of Boynton Beach. I think it's important to have those two individuals up there talking to, as pointmen. And then when we come up there, the third and fourth, we have like an agenda, and then we can really sell that agenda that you've set for us up there those two days. But I think for appearance-wise, I think it's so important to have the elected leadership and the manager of our city being up there as point persons.
I was not negating the mayor. I'm saying, add one plus the mayor and the city manager, and I would be the third.
Okay, I would, I'm fine if you want me to be there. I think you make some good points. I'd be willing to go to the legislative one, and then on, and then you would go to that. And then I think it's also important to be there in Palm Beach County, so you two and the mayor, I think, should go to Palm Beach Counties in March.
I have no problem with that.
Okay.
And if we have three elected officials go, that March 3rd is a commission meeting night, so we would need to reschedule and/or cancel a commission meeting. We can, I'll check with Janet to see if March 2nd, that Monday, because I think, it doesn't start till late afternoon on Tuesday, so we'd try to fly out in the morning and return Thursday morning. So that would be commission meeting night Tuesday. We would not obviously have a quorum, so we would reschedule or cancel.
Okay. So it'll be Commissioner Merker, myself, and you on the legislative, and then Commissioner Fitzpatrick, Vice Mayor, myself, and you on, in Palm Beach County Day. No, we want to take in three.
Oh, there's no, four.
We budgeted up to three to go to Palm Beach County Days. I didn't budget for the first, the legislative opportunity. It's been recommended by our lobbyists that we have an opportunity, while the legislators are up there in January during committee week, to get some real face time with them. So I would have to, we'll just pull it out, we'll have to pull it out of our business meeting budget and just not do something else later in the year, you know? But Palm Beach County Days, we budgeted up to three, but again, that's, it's up to the commission. We can, if you want to do four-
The reason I'd like to go to that also, because what we learned there on the 21st, and then we have this background knowledge, and then we're meeting the different legislators, obviously, I would like to articulate and voice my opinion on legislation that I think would be good for Boynton Beach. So that's why I would like to go to both.
If you want, I'll stay here during the Palm Beach County Days, if you want the three of them to go.
Lori, didn't you say it could be three, three commissioners and the mayor?
No, we budgeted up to three. But that's up to, that's totally, we can, you know, we can have four go. I don't, that's up to the commission. It's totally up to you, how many go. I think it's important for the mayor to go to Palm Beach County Days. I really do. I think that's important that you be their mayor. But again, that's up to the commission on, you have to approve one another's travel.
It's a, it's a most, well, I'll give it to you, but it's more, it's more important for me to be there for Palm Beach County Days than legislative thing. Is that true?
Really? Not really.
Or both?
They're both.
Yeah, I think both are, yeah.
What does the commission want to do? It's up to you guys.
Well, I would like to say, I think, I'm fine with the mayor going up twice, but we are still kind of an austerity budget, so I think the commission as a whole should pick one or the other.
I agree.
I agree with that assessment.
Okay. So they want to go on Palm Beach County Days, you need to pick either legislative or Palm Beach County Days.
I'll go January 21st.
Okay. Got it?
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So who's going to, just for the record, who's going to 21st?
The mayor and Commissioner Merker for the January 21 trip, and, and me, right? And then the Palm Beach County Days will be the mayor, the vice mayor, and Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Do we need a motion?
And we'll discuss rescheduling, commission meeting, I'll get something on the next agenda.
Is there a motion to approve those? Discussion?
Gladly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, okay, we'll go to bids and purchases over $100,000. Proposed resolution 14-121, approve and authorize the city manager to sign a 60-month application service provider agreement with Sun Guard Sector, Inc., effective January 1, 2015, to host their integrated HTE government application software package, and the city's date at the Sun Guard Secure Data Center. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion?
Just, and I had this discussion with the, with the city manager, was why we get into these five-year deals? And you explained to me it was cost, but there's so much, I mean, I'm a leasing-type guy. I mean, we can lease something for less time. Does everything that we lease is five years? I know the last discussion we had on some equipment was five years. Is that?
Well, this is, this is our enterprise software that runs basically the entire city financial system. To, we, I call it a marriage you can't get out of and a divorce you really can't afford right now, in terms of the system. To get out of, to leave HTE and the Sun Guard system would be at least a half a million dollars for the city. So we've, we've made a tremendous investment in it, and we are in it, and we are, will not be likely changing the vendor at least for another five years because of the cost to do that, and then the implementation is, takes at least two years. Very expensive, and, you know, that's future. But right now, with the, it's about a $200,000 a year expense for the maintenance on the Sun Guard system for us. The, to go to a one- or two-year contract, they hit you much harder on your annual costs. We're saving, and I'll let John speak to the percentages, but to enter into a five-year, it's the most cost-effective. We will be with that system. We know we won't be changing it prior to that, so I would say, take advantage, and we've done it in five-year increments in the past. And we're recommending go one more five-year increment for, from a cost-saving standpoint, because it's an expensive item, no matter how you look at it.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion is second already on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion unanimous. Proposed resolution 14-122, approve and authorize city manager to exercise task force order U-1A-01 with global tech, global tech for not to exceed the fee of $198,788 for construction management services for the raw water main section C project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to find out exactly where, I didn't really, I had trouble with my computer, so I'm not sure exactly where this, this is the third phase, but what's it from to where it's?
Colin Groff, Utilities Director. Yeah, this is the third phase. It starts a little bit west of Congress on Woolbright, and it goes down, and then it's drilled under the canal, under CSX Railroad, under 95, and it comes up in the park, at the end of the Little League Park, where it ties into the existing system.
This is the, the third phase of what is the connection between our Western Water Treatment Plant and our Eastern Water Treatment Plant? So we can pull water from the west, treat it here, and pull less demand on our wells on the eastern, eastern end of the city. We have plenty of capacity out west. Is that- Is that...
That's correct.
A good layman's expression.
Yeah, layman's terms, to move water from the west to the east.
Right.
So it's going from Congress to the Little League field?
Yes, on Woolbright.
All right, well, that's kind of what I thought, and to me, I'm glad you're doing it, but the $200,000 seemed pretty cheap to me, so I was just...
This is just construction services. It, it, we did negotiate it down because a large portion of the pipe is not open-cut, it's drilled, and so it's a much shorter construction period, so there's not as much time they have to be out there. Drilling pipe is quicker, although it's more expensive to do. It's just quicker.
These are, this is our eyes in the field to ma, to make sure the project is properly constructed. It's not the actual construction.
This is not the construction.
No, that's millions.
That's what I was, that's where, that's where I was going with $200,000 for that? I don't get it.
Yeah, the construction will be bid in about four weeks, and then you'll be seeing that contract. I think the budget is a little bit over $8 million.
Okay, that sounds...
Is that better? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I wish we could get it that cheap.
Commissioner McCray?
So these are just the guys watching the guys doing the drilling.
These are just the guys watching it, yes.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner McCray?
Yeah, thank you, sir. I'm glad Commissioner Fitzpatrick got confused to bring you up here. I understood, but I'm just want, have a reason to get you out your seat. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion is unanimous. Proposed Resolution 14-123, approve professional services agreement for building division services, RFP, number 076-2411-14/JMA, with CAP Government, Inc. of Weston, Florida, for the one-year term on an as-needed basis. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. And motion second. Discussion?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a lengthy discussion with the city manager in regards of why we was doing this, and I do understand, and I'm glad it is used as an as-needed basis.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion unanimous. Proposed Resolution Number 14-124, approve and authorize the city manager to execute task order U-1B-03 with Matthews Consulting, Inc., for not to exceed fee of $194,924.44 for design necessary improvements to lift station 309 and subsequent support of the bidding and construction process. This is in accordance with the approval of RFQ 0Q17-2821-14/DGL. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion?
Yes, I was looking for you. I don't need to discuss anything. You can sit back down.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? I'm here.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion as unanimous. Takes us to public hearing. There's five items here, and the, the property owner has requested that all five of these be tabled to 12-0214, all five, A, B, C, D, and E.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second to table all five items. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Show the motion as unanimous. City manager's report, results of the onsite FCIC/NCIC records compliance audit results conducted by the Florida Department of Law Enforcement on the Police Department's Records Unit on Tuesday, October 21st. City manager?
I just wanted to take a moment to brag a little bit on the police department, because this is a very difficult audit that we go through, through the FDLE. They really, they come in and they inspect in great detail our record-keeping, our timeliness in getting required reporting up to the, to the state and to the feds, to keep our NCIC and FCIC certification, which allows us access, in the layman's terms, to police information that, you know, it's very highly regard, highly secure. So our, our staff team, and if, Major Steele, do you want to maybe come up and mention the staff members, because they worked very hard. We had 100% compliance rate, rating when we finished the audit, which is very good, and I'm very proud of it, and I wanted to just toot their horn a little bit.
Hello, Speaker Steele, Police Department. I would like to thank primarily Sergeant Mattson. She's over the records division. It was a very stressful time for her, and she made it through. And like you said, it was 100% compliant, and I believe they've even requested to use some of our things as models. So she, along with the other records personnel, did a great job.
And we, you know, as, over the years, the past few years, we have suffered a loss in our records technician staff and have slowly been able to build that back up, so it even, makes it even more meaningful that they had an even tougher challenge, as we have some new employees that have come aboard, we've had to train them, and to maintain that and maintain 100% compliance is remarkable. It's very good.
It just goes to show you, good police work is not just about always catching the bad guys. It's about keeping the records straight and a good audit, and we take very, you know, we should be very proud of this. I am very proud of this police department.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to legal. Proposed ordinance number 14-029, second reading and public hearing, approve addition of nondiscrimination policy. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion second. Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance?
Who should read by title?
I'm sorry. Thank you, legal.
Ordinance number 14-029, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 2 of the city's Code of Ordinances entitled Administration, Article 1 in General, by creating Section 2-24 to be entitled Nondiscrimination Policy, providing for nondiscrimination in the city's hiring policies and all other activities promoted or sponsored by the city of Boynton Beach, providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Okay, that's, anybody in the audience wished, this is second reading, anybody wish to address this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll return to the commission. I have a motion as a second. Any other discussion?
Yes, I would. Well, let me do it after the vote.
All right. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Merker?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Casello?
Yes.
The vote is 5-0.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
This has to do with the city of Boynton Beach having to do with the businesses. The world changes. Times change. And though this is not a requirement of businesses in, in Boynton Beach, I would hope that the businesses of Boynton Beach would open their, their minds, open their eyes, their hearing, to realize that benefits for all people of Boynton Beach should be. And the world changes, to repeat myself, and I think what we've done by passing the domestic partnership in Boynton Beach is a tremendous plus, but it should involve all sectors. We're just one. In this case, I'd like to say we're the leaders, saying that domestic partnership is today and will be tomorrow, and I'd like anyone who listens to this program or reads about this will think about it for their employees also, and I thank you.
Well, you just talked about, really, is the next ordinance we're proposing is the domestic partnership. The one we just passed was nondiscrimination policy. So it's passed 5-0. Next one's proposed ordinance number 14-030, if the legal would read the title.
Ordinance number 14-030, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 2 of the city's Code of Ordinances entitled Administration, Article 1 in General, adding a new Section 2-24A to be entitled the Boynton Beach Domestic Partnership Act, providing domestic partnership benefits for city of Boynton Beach employees, providing for findings and intent, providing for definitions, providing for registration, providing for termination of domestic partnerships, providing for extension of benefits, providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
This is ordinance 14-030 on second reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Anybody in the public wish to address this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll return to commission. I will be voting against this ordinance. I think it is trying to supersede state law. State law, at this time, does not recognize same-sex marriage in Florida. It's against the law. And in our, in the, under this ordinance of, on page 6 of the 7, items of, "When the term spouse or married or marriage is used in other city ordinances and documents, it shall be interpreted to include registered domestic partner. When the term family or dependent is used in other city ordinance, it shall be interpreted to include domestic partners and dependents of registered domestic partnerships. When the term divorce or legal separation is used in other city ordinances, it shall be interpreted to mean termination of domestic partnerships." Under this ordinance, domestic partnerships include same-sex marriage. I do not condone that, and I really believe this ordinance is superseding state law, so I'll be voting against it. Please call the roll.
May I say something, please?
Go ahead.
I totally emphatically and definitely disagree. We're living in the 21st century. We're not living in the 18th century. Change happens. If you live in the past, you die in the past. The past is to learn. We're dealing with a different mental capacity today, a different interest today, the younger people today, the children, the grandchildren are part of this. So we have to move forward and think forwardly. This is a major plus for our city to be identified in the 21st century.
And I'd like to go on the record that I respect the mayor's stance and opinion on this. I think we all have strong opinions on a lot of things, and this is one of the mayor's, and I respect him for that. There's no problem there.
I do, too.
Please call the roll.
McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Fitzpatrick?